Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
End the occupation.
End the occupation.
End apartheid.
End apartheid.
End the occupation.
End the occupation.
End apartheid.
End apartheid.
Long live Gaza.
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 Long live Palestine.
Long live Palestine.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
Not another penny, not another dime.
Not another penny, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Not another penny, not another dime.
Not another penny, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Not another penny, not another dime.
Not another penny, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Free, free Palestine.
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 Long live Gaza.
Long live Gaza.
A couple things, uh, only fifteen people get to speak during the forum, but even if you don't get called, please show up, uh, and stand in solidarity. Anytime we have someone speaking in support of Palestine, stand up in solidarity, uh, with, with your, uh, your comrades here. Um, also, we are having a, there's a national action on November ninth, calling for a shut it down, a walkout of students walking out from schools, people, you know, trying to organize walkouts from their jobs, if that's possible, uh, and just trying to disrupt as much as possible on Thursday the ninth. So, uh, we will be having a gathering at Kathy McMorris Rogers office over eight fifty East Spokane Falls Boulevard. I have one thirty on Thursday. Alright, so anybody who can make that, show up, bring your signs, um, and, and, and show up if you need to disrupt it. So I know we're trying to organize on some college campuses right now to try to get some walkouts organized. So if you're a student or a young person, you can, uh, kind of organize people, that would be wonderful. Uh, Justice, you want to talk? About ready, okay. Does anybody else want to lead some chants up here, especially if you're, you know, yeah, Aslan?
Justice is our demand.
Justice is our demand.
No peace on stolen land.
No peace on stolen land.
Justice is our demand.
Justice is our demand.
No peace on stolen land.
No peace on stolen land.
Justice is our demand.
Justice is our demand.
No peace on stolen land.
No peace on stolen land.
Justice is our demand.
Justice is our demand.
No peace on stolen land.
No peace on stolen land.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Palestine will never die.
Palestine will never die.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Palestine will never die.
Palestine will never die.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Palestine will never die.
Palestine will never die.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry.
Palestine will never die.
Palestine will never die.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing Gaza.
Stop bombing Gaza.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing Gaza.
Stop bombing Gaza.
No more funds for Israel's crimes.
No more funds for Israel's crimes.
No more funds for Israel's bonds.
No more funds for Israel's bonds.
No more funds for Israel's crimes.
No more funds for Israel's crimes.
No more funds for Israel's bonds.
No more funds for Israel's bonds.
Stop funding genocide.
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 Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding genocide.
Stop funding genocide.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing Gaza.
Stop bombing Gaza.
Stop bombing Palestine.
Stop bombing Palestine.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
Alright, I'm gonna say from the river to the sea, and you say Palestine will be free, as loud as you can, so everyone can hear it. Palestine too. From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Thank you guys so much.
Uh, you know, Councilmember Bingo in there, he, he tried to say that that was a, a chant that is in support of genocide. That is a hundred percent false, okay? That chant is about liberation and self-determination, okay? Liberation, self-determination does not equate to genocide at all. And so anybody who's saying that is arguing in bad faith, and that is a chant for liberation, and so we should be proud of that chant. Let's take a quick, uh, moment of silence for the ten thousand plus victims of the genocide in Gaza right now, at the hands of Israel bombardment and, and the war machine there that is funded and enabled by the United States. Uh, about half of those victims are, are children, uh, and not to say that the men and the women don't matter just as much as the children, because they do, but, uh, every ten minutes, a child is dying in Gaza right now, okay? Every ten minutes, a child dies in Gaza. So, um, I'd like y'all to, to all of us, just have a moment of silence.
Kind of like abortion. You want to say abortion?
Take a moment of silence for Israel.
Thank you. Justice, you ready now? Real quick, uh, hey, just if you, if you're not on our email list yet, come and talk to Dean or I or Reese over here, uh, and give us your contact information, uh, with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and, uh, you know, if you're not getting our emails, that's a good way to make sure you don't miss anything. Sometimes things on social media can get missed, so, uh, you know, if you don't have our contact information, if you don't have yours, come talk to us, uh, before, uh, the event's over.
Okay, we're gonna go back to a few more chants.
Free, free Palestine.
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 Long live Gaza.
Long live Gaza.
Long live Gaza.
Long live Gaza.
Long live Palestine.
Long live Palestine.
Long live Palestine.
Long live Palestine.
Hey, hey, ho, ho, Zionism's got to go.
Hey, hey, ho, ho, Zionism's got to go.
Hey, ho, hey, ho, Zionism's got to go.
Hey, ho, ho, Zionism's got to go.
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the IDF has got to go.
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the IDF has got to go.
Hey, 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 ho, the IDF has got to go.
Hey, hey, ho, the IDF has got to go.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
End the occupation.
End the occupation.
End apartheid.
End apartheid.
End the occupation.
End the occupation.
End apartheid.
End apartheid.
End the occupation.
End the occupation.
End apartheid.
End apartheid.
Stop the bombing.
Stop the bombing.
Stop the bombing.
Stop the bombing.
Stop the genocide.
Stop the genocide.
Stop the genocide.
Stop the genocide.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
No, no money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
Not another nickel, not another dime.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
No more money for Israel's crimes.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
From the river to the sea.
From the river to the sea.
Palestine will be free.
Palestine will be free.
I appreciate everybody. After hearing Dean, this sounds quiet. Um, I appreciate everyone being out here. I appreciate y'all being out here, 'cause right now, it's about bringing this to attention. We can't have a conversation if we ignore issues. We can't bring things up if we refuse to talk about them, if they don't let us talk about them. It's hard talking about things, though. It's rough. It's rough putting yourself out there. And I will say, the question of the week, I do a question of the week, every week, and this week's question, or last week's technically, was, what is vulnerability to you, and are you a vulnerable person? The answer is, for me, vulnerability is what I am all the time. I am not surrounded by, you know, buckets of privilege, and I put myself in situations where I try to advocate for others, and in doing so, that puts me in a vulnerable state.
Winter of love.
But the cool thing about that is that vulnerability has made me have more friends than I've ever had in my entire life.
Vulnerability is strength.
That vulnerability has connected me to our community in ways that I would never have imagined. That vulnerability and putting myself out there regardless of whatever I may assume the dangers may be, has pushed our, our mission, our goals, our values, a little bit further. But what I see here today is not vulnerability.
Chickens for Gassy.
What I see is community, and there's nothing stronger than community. There's nothing stronger than us standing here. Free, free Palestine. Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Pro, protect Israel.
Free, free Palestine.
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 Good job, everybody. Thanks for being here. Hey, thank you all for being here. Uh, just another beautiful show of solidarity, and as Justice said, community. Uh, it's beautiful to see, week after week, y'all showing up and, and sending a message to our elected officials who are trying to ignore, uh, the genocide that's going on. They are complicit. They are complicit with the statement they make, okay? So, uh, we're gonna go in there in a second and, and let them know that, alright? Uh, so, so make some noise for yourself, for your ability to show up consistently and be here in community with each other and stand for Palestine. Let's hear it. Free, free Palestine.
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 Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free, free Gaza.
Free Palestine.
Free Palestine.
Does anybody else want to lead a chant before we go in? Is there anybody else connected closely with this cause? That wants to lead a chant? Alright, let's go in and, uh, make sure you don't bring your signs all the way into the, to the seating area, or you can bring your, instead, outside there, alright? Thank you for being here. Free Palestine.
You said you were a Muslim, correct? Palestinian?
Yes.
Does a Palestinian support the LGBTQ?
Hmm?
Does a Palestinian support the L-
What LGBTQ?
The homosexual stuff? Do they, you guys don't support that?
No.
Do you understand that most of these people here are homosexual, they, they align themselves with the LGBTQ and homosexuals? Do you know that most of them do? Most of these people-
Most of them don't even like Christians.
Mo- mo- most of these people align themselves with that?
They, they come to support me. I will appreciate them.
So you're willing to bend because they support you?
No, 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 don't switch what I'm saying.
Well, you're saying they come to support, you just said that.
They come to support me here. I will appreciate what they're doing, okay? But, like, if I am not with them, but they come to me to support against what's going to the children and the kids.
So you know there's children in Israel too that are being hurt, correct? There's no children in Israel being hurt at all?
Show me one video, one single video, brother. One single video.
They're all, they're all over. They're all over. What about the rave? What about the rave when Hamas came into the rave and, and, and grabbed up people at the rave on that, three weeks ago?
They kidnapped the soldier and the army.
No, that, that was a rave. That was a dance party going on when they parachuted in. That wasn't Israelis that parachuted in, that was Hamas, correct?
Yeah, they don't do nothing like-
They, what do you mean they didn't do nothing?
Our land. We have the right to defend ourselves.
Well, so does Israel have the right. Any land has, they don't have the right to do-
They occupy our land. How do you have the right? They take my land. If I come to take your home, what will you do?
It was actually, it was, it was actually Israel's land. You had to go back to the Bible, the scriptures. No, no, forget that. Yeah?
We know that. Everyone knows. All world knows. There's no Israel in the map, before it's Palestine.
I'm talking about the people, not, not, not the land itself, the people.
I take your home, what will you do? You will kill me to take your home back, right?
To stop the Iraq war, to get it, to get us from not going into that conflict, uh, you know, that informed the party, etc. But, uh, the basic premise of the party is that we stand for the liberation of all working class, exploited, oppressed people in the United States and throughout the world. So, uh, we are anti-imperialist, we're anti-colonial, uh, we are in favor of a system where, uh, people, working class people have the power and are able to have a society which people's needs are met, uh, people's needs and the planet's needs are met, instead of the needs of corporations that are profiting by the spets of us and by the spets of the planet, so, uh, people's needs over, over greed, it's actually, this is what we're about, so, uh-
What's, what are people following? What's the website?
Yeah, so PSL, uh, dot, or sorry, PSLweb.org, uh, is a great place to go, and if they're looking to get involved, slash join at the end of that.
Oh, right there.
So you can find a whole party platform, uh, for indigenous self-determination, black liberation, working class people-
Black liberation? What's black liberation?
...in a society which, you know, we're all taken care of rather than just a few people on the top.
Okay, yeah, thank you Scott. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Thank you very much.
What, what's, what's black liberation?
Black liberation, uh, you know, people who've been systematically oppressed, uh, for centuries, being liberated, having their supplement. Thanks for the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Time to go in, huh? Get set up. Thank you guys.
You guys can get right up front. They do it.
So if you guys want to, uh, support it. Black liberation for oppressed people like myself. He said there were black liberation for oppressed people like myself.
Read some Malcolm X, and I'll tell you about one.
Yeah, he didn't like white liberals. Malcolm X didn't like, yeah, he's pretty close. Said I'm not a liberal. He said read some Malcolm X. I told you that. Might want to keep your distance. So in case you guys don't know what's going on, um, there's a couple of city council people that is backing Israel. And so, uh, Party of Socialism and Liberation are here and opposed to that. Uh, so some of these people are gonna be speaking tonight to voice their disapproval of city council, two of the city council people. Um, Bingo, Jonathan Bingo and somebody else, uh, for their disapproval of them, uh, backing Isra- Israel. So, uh, that's what's going on. Uh, I think some people are kind of bothered also about, um, what took place with them blocking the roads in Spokane on, what was that, Saturday? So... Let's see what happens. Again, you guys, if you guys would like to support any super chats, you guys know what to do. I have everything pinned on Facebook and YouTube. So, you'll be here for, uh, remainder of the evening. We'll see how long I stay. But, thank you for tuning in. This shall be fun. So I think that's Bingo up there. Let me turn the camera around. I think he's standing up. So that's one, that's one guy who stands with Israel that they're against. I believe that that's him. Maybe it's not. We'll see, Cheryl, we'll see. We shall see. Supposed to be starting like any minute, like three minutes. But you guys did hear the Palestinian guy that I was speaking to. He said that the Palestinians do not support the LGBTQ. You heard it straight from him, as a Palestinian man, said that they do not support the LGBTQ. However, he's willing to yoke up and be friends with the people if they have his back. And the reason why I asked him about the LGBTQ, the LGB out for the, that, whatever number of letters it is, because a lot of these people here are for that. Uh, they stand with that, in support of that, so that's, that's why I asked him specifically that question. I didn't see that. I didn't know. So Bingo is the guy that supports Israel. So Bingo is the guy that supports Israel.
Spokane City Council meeting for November sixth, sunrise from the 11th.
As base of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Speaker, what are your call? Council President Mayor, present, Councilmember Bingo, Councilmember Papkart.
Present.
Councilmember Olrich.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wolpersen.
Present.
Councilmembers of all, let the record reflect that all councilmembers are present. Thank you. We have two proclamations. One is for Veterans Day led by Councilmember Olrich and Leslie Anderson on behalf of the FFW Post Fifty-One is here to accept. Welcome. Well, go ahead, please.
Whereas the United States Air Force provides compelling aerospace and cyberspace capabilities to provide precise and reliable global vigilance, reach and power for our nation while developing airman technology and integrating operations. And whereas the United States Army provides to win our nation's wars by preserving peace and security and providing for the defense of our nation by providing prompt sustained land dominance across a full range of military operations, the spectrum of conflict, in support of combatant commanders. And whereas the United States Coast Guard has safeguarded our nation's maritime interests and environment around the world, demonstrating quick responsiveness and adaptability in a broad range of emergencies through its multi-mission service. And whereas the United States Marine Corps has been integral to our country's military operations since its inception, serving their vital role in national security as an amphibious expeditionary airborne combined task force capable of forceful intrigue from air, land and sea. And whereas the United States Navy maintains trains and equipped combat-ready naval forces capable of winning wars, deterring aggression, maintaining freedom of seas through the development of aircraft, weapons, tactics, technique, organization and equipment. And whereas Spokane County has over forty-five thousand veterans who have selflessly served our nation during times of peace and conflict. And the eleventh day of the eleventh month is a day to honor their bravery and sacrifices. In addition, the city of Spokane is proud to illuminate the pavilion with green lights as part of the nationwide effort to support military veterans from November sixth through the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore, Nene Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, does hereby proclaim Saturday, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three as Veterans Day in Spokane and encourage our community to join her in showing our appreciation and commitment to those who have served in the armed forces so that our nation continues to be the land of the free.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few things for us?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members. The theme of Veterans Day two thousand twenty-three is service. Veterans are proud of their military service in defending our nation. Honor reflects the military value of traditions answering the call to duty. Their distinct honor in serving to protect our way of life and the Constitution of the United States of America. Serving in the armed forces is a decision that does not come lightly, but it can be one most rewarding and things to do. Your life as a veteran is not an easy one, but it can be a life with the pride that you have given back to your country that you love. When American soldiers returned to World War II in nineteen forty-five, they were greeted as heroes, but the homecoming was vastly different for Vietnam veterans when they returned over an undivided war. There were no victory parades, welcome home rallies. Instead, most Vietnam veterans returned to disrespect and anger. As a result, today, Americans are making the point to thank our veterans. George Washington said, "The willingness with each, the willingness with which our young people are likely to serve in a war, no matter how justified, shall be directly proportionate to how you perceive the veterans of earlier wars and are treated and appreciated by their nation." When we joined the armed services, we wore a blank check to the government, the amount up to and including our law. For some, that check was cashed. For others, we still carry that check as a reminder of what we did and the commitment that we made to the people of the United States of America to defend it from all enemies. When we joined the service, we swore to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will bear true faith allegiance to the same, and I will obey orders of the President of the United States. A veteran will never forget this oath. On behalf of the FFW Post Fifty-One and its members, we would like to thank the City of Spokane for honoring the veterans of the City of Spokane with this proclamation. We would also like to thank the City of Spokane by participating in Operation Green Light with the illumination of the pavilion and the city hall in green light to honor veterans and raise awareness to the challenges they face. Green is a color of hope, renewal and well-being. By displaying the green light for our veterans, we not only bring attention to the veterans and their need, but also reflect on how we can assist our military service personnel as they transition back into civilian life upon the completion of their service. Once more, on behalf of Post Fifty-One, we thank the City of Spokane for its recognition of the veterans of the City of Spokane. Thank you.
And Councilmember Papkart is going to be reading Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And Becca McNoe is going to be accepting.
Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States, and in Washington in two thousand twenty-three accounting for more deaths than colon cancer and pancreatic cancer combined. And whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, there were five thousand and thirty new lung cancer, new lung cancer cases and two thousand six hundred and thirty deaths because of lung cancer in two thousand twenty-three throughout the state of Washington, with the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer being sixty-one percent. And whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low dose, included tomography, can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing mortality by twenty percent when compared to screening by chest x-ray in the National Lung Screening Trial, and reducing the risk of death at ten years by twenty-four percent in men and thirty-three percent in women as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. Now therefore, I, Nene Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Spokane and recognize the need for research on lung cancer affecting men and women and lung cancer health disparities, encouraging all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening.
On behalf of the American Cancer Society, we thank the City of Spokane for your dedication and providing access to cancer. We're gonna switch gears a little bit here to open the forum, just to review the room. We've gone over this quite a bit and I know we're posted outside for you to read, just remember, and not the clapping, cheering, booing of public helpers. Two minutes for public forum, three minutes for legislative items. And address your comments to me, please, and remember that we're respecting everybody in this room and on the dais. So treat others as you would wish to be treated. And then finally, we're not going to be campaigning using city facilities, which is what this is. So no campaigning here. And I'm gonna read the people, we've got quite a few signed up, we've got fifteen slots. So we'll read the people who will be speaking tonight. Interestingly, we've got quite a few from out of the city of Spokane. We have Midas Yarborough, Beverly Heights, Mega Flattman, Liberty Lake, Larry Andrews, Spokane, Joe Adher, Spokane, Vanessa Rodriguez, Spokane Valley, Will Neville, Spokane, Scott Ford, Spokane Valleys, August Patton, can't read the last name, Spokane, Justice Brawl, Spokane, Adine Lamont-Chin, Leo Winkelman, don't know, Jay McPherson, me, Dave Brookbank, Spokane, Tanya Brusisi, Spokane, and Carl Otnor, Spokane County. So let's do the first three. You can sit up here if you would. Midas is first, and Magra, who's on, will call in, and then Larry. Let's move on to Magra.
Words, silence, those who are of users. It is divisive and it prevents information and the truth from being shared or documented. Council President, I am speaking to you about the weaponization of decorum to purposely suppress information from targeted individuals. August sixteenth, October sixteenth, a citizen tried speaking about Councilmember Papkart's one-sided, last-minute statement about apartheid Israel's constant threat of bombing civilians, not Hamas, the Palestinian civilians. But Councilmember Bingo silenced this individual under the guise of decorum. Council President, this was not the only time when the duty of mutual respect was violated from the council's side. Can we play the video piece? The council president was saying that one of the citizens who wasn't even president was out of order. This is an imbalance of power inherent in our statements of facts are not abusive or against any council rules. In fact, people are trying to speak out of misinformation and patterns that have inadvertently been kept quiet. Without any respect, on July twenty-fourth, Councilmember Papkart did not even use the pre-tense of decorum when he had held an individual speaking on in order. This violation of mutual respect has not been corrected. In fact, Council President, Councilmembers Papkart and Bingo, aided by you, have become more brazen with their successful attempts to silence the truth and obtusegate facts. Council President, facts cannot be stated without all of the information, and the fact is there has been a pattern of silencing any unsavory facts about Councilmembers Bingo and Papkart, even from quoting their words or discussing their actions. It is only through your permission and complicity that they are able to continue abusing this power, such as when on October thirtieth, you personally silenced an individual who tried to speak about this continued issue. Council President, we have opened meetings recently with a reminder to be respectful and to follow the rules. But these words are not facts with action. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Andrews, Joe Adher, and then Vanessa Rodriguez.
Council President, my name is Larry Andrews, citizen of Spokane, and I have business. Could you please take a look at the picture before you? This picture was a slide that was presented to the city by the state hydrologist. And if you look at the right-hand corner of this picture, I'm sorry. You look at the right-hand corner of the picture, it says eight sixty-three CFS, seven seven fifteen. If you know, that the state doesn't consider the Spokane River in a drought situation until it reaches below eight hundred and fifty CFS. And our regulations say it's a thousand, well above what the state regulation is now. The Steering Committee, one of the last meetings, is now requiring a smaller water line size from the main to the building to convey water to the building. The Uniform Plumbing Code has set minimum standard for the water supply size. I have a journeyman plumber. This is well beyond what the Washington State Plumbing Code is. Larry Luton is the chairman. Water in the summer is what keeps our air clean when we drop green water on the green areas. Water is used to fight fires in our houses. The water line size going to the house now, residential fire sprinklers, many of them use the domestic water, and they need that line size for that water. A better approach, and I encourage you really hard and firm, to help this city and the river, would be to get a non-compensated use permit from the state for two hundred and sixty-seven CFS. I talked to the hydrologist about this, and it's very possible for this city to do this. What this would do was...
Larry, turn us up. Thank you. The hydrologist was my neighbor.
What?
The hydrologist was my neighbor. So I'm talking.
That's good, because he's over on the post, and he didn't realize what happened.
Yes. Thank you. Joe, Vanessa, and Will.
All right, Council President, council members. I'd like to share with you a story about a little girl named Sarah. She's four years old. She just started preschool. Sarah loves school. She's one of these kids that wants to do everything herself. She's learning a lot of new things. She's already learned how to write her name. She's learning how to count. But there's also a lot of stuff that Sarah doesn't know. Sarah doesn't know how to tie her shoes yet, but she's really trying hard and won't let anybody help her. She doesn't know how to tell time. She doesn't know why her family had to leave their house. She doesn't know why her family is homeless. She doesn't yet know that to our city government, she is eight hundred and thirty-seven percent less valuable than a homeless man. In fact, last year, the City of Spokane spent on average one thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars per child or family member that was experiencing homelessness in a shelter while spending eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars on a single adult in the shelter system. Sarah doesn't yet know that families like hers made up twenty-one percent of the homeless population but received five percent of the funding last year. Title eighteen of the City Municipal Code prohibits discrimination based off of familial status and age, in fact, in two different sections. It's against the city's code to discriminate by family status or age. It's against the city's code to discriminate by family status or age, but city funding would indicate that we might be doing that for families versus our single population. So I'm asking the city council to enact a funding guideline that would direct funding for homeless services to be based on an equitable distribution of funds based off the percentage of population served. So organizations that serve families like Sarah's, who make up twenty-one percent of the homeless population, would have access to twenty-one percent of the funding rather than five percent of the funding. Thank you so much.
Vanessa, Will, and then Scott.
Council President, on October thirtieth, we heard from Spokane Human Rights Commission Chair Onwar Peace that a man was beaten so violently by an off-duty officer, the jail refused entry. On June twenty-sixth, the day council approved ordinance C-three-six-three-nine-four criminalizing being in a park after hours, we heard Councilmember Capcart say, "If there's unexpected bizarre or really bad numbers, then we're going to..."
Point of order, Council President. Point of order. Point of order. Yeah, we're not supposed to mention other council members' names.
Can you continue with that one, should we mention this?
Council President, numerous people warned this violence was to be expected, contrary to Councilmember Capcart's statement. Was the rest of his comment true?
Point of order.
Could you please not mention it? You could mention my name.
Okay. Are you going to discuss the humanity of this ordinance since an off-duty police officer used it as justification for beating and then arresting a man? This resolution wasn't able to be implemented without changes that took away the understanding that people use the parks as a safe crossing during later hours. The Parks Department said the ordinance needed to match their hours, and the ordinance got worse and became an excuse to not only arrest people who the ordinance targets, but also beat a man half to death. Council President, Councilmember Stratton said, "We are also very aware of the Human Rights Commission..."
Point of order. We follow the rules.
Just address me, over the chair.
"...and the Equity Commission and the stance that they've taken, which is why we put in the ordinance that we want the Parks Department and the police to collect the data. We need to really look at this as serious. We need to care about those equity issues, and we want to know what is happening." Council President, was Councilmember Stratton's statement true of this?
Point of order. Council President, at this point, I don't think there's gonna be any following rules.
You've got a little bit of timeline. Can you stop the clock? Can you continue with that?
I just have one more sentence. Are you going to do something now that you know what is happening?
Thank you. Will, Scott, and you.
I think amongst ourselves, we have not universally kind of followed the rule of addressing Council President. I think we have...
It's broken clear, your rules.
I believe the rules you refer to, they address you, but there's nothing about...
Yes, yes.
...what's going to happen.
Which, Will?
Will, hold on. When addressing the council members, the public shall direct all remarks to the Council President, shall refrain from remarks directed personally to any council member or any other individual, and shall confine remarks to matters that are specifically before the council at the time.
So I guess my question is like the directed part. I think that's the part that's confusing for a lot of people is mentioning what someone said or done or directed. And I think that's the confusion. And I think that would be good for update or rules.
Talk about that when we're talking about rules.
So I think it's good for the public to know that we have been interpreting and mentioning that council members' names.
Which is, yes.
But I think that's...
Sorry, Will, go ahead.
Will, no. I'm Will Neville.
Council President, on Indigenous Peoples' Day, October ninth, Spokane City Council voted against them tax on this. This voting night was not even publicly, on publicly released data, meaning that there's no public commentary on this matter. This action is actually typical of all city council members who, despite whatever their differences are, still toe the line of the Spokane business class. The fight for Palestinian independence has much in common with indigenous efforts for liberation of colonizers all across the world. It is time for the United States, a country like Israel built on settler colonialism and imperialism, as well as being guilty of perpetuating Israeli apartheid to end all military aid to Israel. According to the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights in Spokane, over three-point-four million dollars of our tax dollars go towards military aid to Israel. The Israeli military then uses our tax dollars to kill Palestinian people, many whom are children, as well as evict and destroy their homes and steal their native land. With three-point-four million dollars, we could give hundreds of people public housing for a year in this city, provide free healthcare for many children, and contribute to the overall well-being of our community. The Spokane City Council continues to be an enabler of U.S. imperialism. Correct me if I'm wrong, but every Spokane City Council member here has voted to increase police spending at some point or another. The military-industrial complex, who has long been a benefactor of the bloodshed in the Middle East, continues to profit off the sales of surplus military equipment to the Spokane Police Department. We cannot deny the inscriptible ties between the Spokane Police Department and the military-industrial complex. Whatever your feelings are for Moss, the actions of the Israeli government in response are those of a settler colonial state seizing the opportunity to justify the eradication of the indigenous population. It is in city council's best interest to reverse course of this resolution. It is imperative right now to uplift Palestinians and their voices. Ceasefire now and end the occupation.
Thank you, Will. Scott Ward, August Patton, Justice Braw.
We are here once again to demand that this council retracts their October nine resolution in support of the violent, genocidal apartheid state of Israel. We demand a new resolution that calls for the end to all USA to design the state. Every year, three-point-four million dollars of Spokane taxpayers goes to fund the Israeli war machine, a war machine that is murdering a Palestinian child in Gaza every ten minutes. Israeli bombs, missiles, and white phosphorus rain death and destruction on hospitals, schools, homes, and ambulances. Resolution is racist and historically ignorant, a Zionist project that evicted over seven-hundred-thousand Palestinians from their land during the Nakba. The state of Israel forces millions of Palestinians into refugee camps, traps them in Gaza, bombs them, humiliates them with apartheid, and violently evicts them through settlement expansion. Speaking with the media on October sixteenth, Councilmember Bingle admitted that he never spoke to a member of our Palestinian community before the October nine resolution. This demonstrates city council's disregard for our Palestinian community. To present October seventh as an unprovoked attack is offensive and racist. Why did you pass the resolution without any sound historical investigation, without any voices from the Palestinian community? Do you just see Israelis as more human and more important? Why is the council never condemned the constant daily violence and terror that Israel has inflicted on the Palestinian people for the last seventy-five years? Why do you demonize and condemn the colonized people but never the colonizer? And just so we are clear, when Councilmember Bingle says, "The river to the sea is a chant..."
Point of order.
Address me. Let's not mention the other council members, please.
Is... When he mentions the river to the sea is a chant, the chant for that is not a call for... Sorry. The river to the sea chant is a call for genocide. As stated to the media, it is not. It is a call for liberation and self-determination. What you are doing there is projection. Free Palestine.
So, August, Cap, Justice Braw, Agne Ramon, Will. Two minutes.
For the sake of clarity, I will have my members talk, if you do not understand anything. Hello, city council members and city council president, specifically. My name is August Patton-Sprouts. I'm a resident of Spokane County and have been for seven years. Due to your refusal to retract your racist statement in support of Israel made on October ninth, I stand here today with nothing but disgust for my city. Over ten thousand Palestinians have been murdered in Gaza within the span of a single month. That number has increased by two thousand since I wrote this testimony to read to you last week. Two thousand in a single week. These atrocities have been funded by American hands. How dare you sit idly funneling money into the inhumane actions of the apartheid state of Israel? How dare you use my tax dollars to fund genocide? According to the Geneva Conventions, Israel has committed many war crimes, only one of which includes the bombings that Israel perpetrated against Gaza in the West Bank. It quotes, "It is a war crime to launch an indiscriminate attack affecting the civilian population or civilian objects in the knowledge that such an attack will cause excessive loss of life, injury to civilians, or damage to civilian objects." API Article eighty-five, three-B. Gaza is undergoing carpet bombing. There is no excuse for these actions. Israel is committing war crimes. Entire lineages have been wiped off the face of the earth and still you sit silently, upholding a resolution to support Israel one-hundred percent. I am disgusted by you. I am embarrassed by you. And I am filled with shame over the fact that you refuse to feel shame for what you have done and what you have supported. Your cognitive dissonance is not a shared condition. The people see with a clear vision exactly what you are doing, and we will not stand silently as you continue to fund genocide. My command and he cannot allow it of me. End U.S. military aid to Israel.
Justice Braw, Agne Ramon, and then Leo Winkelman.
Council President, on October sixteenth, David Brookbank was representing the action taken by this council on October ninth. The council meeting a week prior. He specifically pointed out the statements, testimonies that Councilmember Bingle and Michael Capcart...
Point of order.
Councilmember Bingle called...
Point of order. Council President, I don't think there's any interest in following the rules by this.
Can you not refer to them, please?
And Councilmember Capcart says it's a point of order. He continues to call out the individual council member in violation of our rules.
Why do we have rules?
Councilmember Bingle's...
Point of order.
And the president responds, "Can you keep your comments to me, please?" David responds, "I'm speaking to you, Council President." "Yes, but don't mention anyone else." David asks, "Before you start the clock, the gentleman in the glasses and the gentleman who are acting, can I refer to them in this manner?" He goes on to ask, "What is the manner that I can refer to individuals?" Council President responds, "Address your comments to me. Don't refer to people on the dais by name." "Is this a democracy?" David asks. "Is the limit over form? I don't want to spar with you, please." David responds, "I know, but we need to." Jonathan Bingle chimes in again, "Point of order."
Yes, and I'm...
My point of order is outside.
Council President, I think we defined our rule at the beginning of this, and for the sake of that, we have defined our interpretation of that.
I understand what you're trying to do. Could you please just say what you need to say without breaking the rules?
Yes, absolutely. He specifically pointed out testimonies by Councilmember Michael Capcart and Councilmember Jonathan Bingle.
Point of order.
Misinterpretation. Misinterpretation. We need counsel on this.
Can you sit down, please? We have nothing.
We have a right to criticize the public officials. I still have time. We have a right to increase speed and accountability. How can we hold our public officials accountable if we cannot name them?
Thank you, Jim.
The time is left on my clock.
End the police occupation of city councils, Spokane.
What if it was your family, your kids? What if...
End the occupation. End the occupation. End apartheid. End apartheid. Free Palestine. Free Palestine. End the bombing of Gaza. End the bombing of Gaza. End the bombing of Gaza. End bombing children. 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 End bombing hospitals and schools. End bombing hospitals and schools. Where family are dead. End bombing churches. End bombing churches. End bombing churches. End bombing churches. End bombing mosques. End bombing mosques. End bombing synagogues. End bombing synagogues.
If it's over there, it'll be tossed up buildings.
Free Palestine. 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 Long live 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 Gaza. Long live Gaza. Long live Gaza. Long live Gaza. Palestine will be free. Palestine will be free. Palestine will be free. Palestine will be free. River to the sea. Palestine will be free. Palestine will be free. River to the sea. River to the sea. Palestine will be free. Palestine will be free. River to the sea. From the river to the sea. Palestine will be free. Palestine will be free.
Stop bombing our kids.
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 They are 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 our daughters.
They are our daughters.
They are our mothers.
They are our mothers.
They are our grandmothers.
They are our grandmothers.
They are our babies.
They are our babies.
Stop bombing babies.
Stop bombing babies.
Stop bombing kids.
Stop bombing kids.
Stop bombing hospitals.
Stop bombing hospitals.
Stop starving kids.
Stop starving kids.
Stop starving kids.
Stop starving kids.
Stop starving the kids.
Stop starving kids.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
City council, listen to us.
City council, listen to us.
Stop funding genocide.
Stop funding genocide.
Stop funding genocide.
Stop funding genocide.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop funding apartheid.
Stop spending money to a genocide.
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 Stop spending our money to genocide.
Stop spending our money to genocide.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Free, free Palestine.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
They are our kids.
They are our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
They are our kids.
They are our kids.
Stop bombing our kids.
They are our kids. City council, listen to us. City council, listen to us. City council, listen to us. Stop funding genocide. Stop funding genocide. Stop funding genocide. Stop funding genocide. City council, listen to us. City council, listen to us. City council, listen to us.
Make it proud.
Stop funding genocide. Let the people speak. Let the people speak. Let the people speak. Let the people speak. Stop funding genocide. Stop funding genocide. Stop funding genocide.
Do you know what you're gonna support that story? Do you have to wait for your overlords to...
Totally funny. You don't intend it.
It says we all make us all strong.
Wow, usually when someone looks like you're stupid a little. And that guy, I don't know why he's getting all worked up. Looks like my friend showed up.
Because he's an orange man back guy. Wow, he's triggered. He's like the cops here.
Because I could be some crazy MAGA extremist and go crazy on him.
Is that a threat, sir?
No, that's not a threat. I feel threatened having this guy jump up at me, Mr. Hill.
Oh, by somebody...
You just need to keep your comments to yourself and not talk to me.
You sound a little threatening.
Okay there, Mr. White Boy?
Excuse me?
You heard me.
Say it again.
What? What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? I'm not trying, how am I trying to get him to fight me? I came here to speak, and I can't now because of these people.
And you need to threaten me?
Nobody's threatening you. Look here, old man, I called you an old man. Whatever. Did I threaten him? This guy right here is a straight up, his page is called Spokane Rising, what is it? Rising Tide? This pathetic old man tried to attack my friend's business a few years ago. I even forgot about that. He comes here and he talks, he's a little keyboard warrior. He sits there and talks shit about me on his stupid page. He won't say it to my face, only because there's cops here. I'm the wrong person. I do. What are you talking about? You guys, this is a city council. This is not to cry about free Palestine and all that other stuff you guys are crying about.
Why didn't they all follow over to Washington?
My freedom of speech has now been silenced because I can't speak now, until next week. So how is that fair to me? To you, I'm not speaking to the people I want to speak to, the same people you come here to speak to. Why is that not fair for me? Oh, I can? I did sign up. I don't know who you think you are telling me I can and can do what? Cause you're white or what?
They are selfish. They are not human beings. I get so angry and I don't understand. Please, please stop this. City council, please don't be a part of the problem. Please stop encouraging the genocide of these young girls with your pro-Israel resolution. When he's going to college for ends, to the prolific law maker Gaza by Israel. Please pressure our lawmakers for a ceasefire. There are 300,000 people in Spokane. We have to do something to help. Thank you for your time.
I'm here to, I'm here to try to speak once again on this council's resolution of the genocide of Palestine. I stood here last week to point out how this resolution was racist, colonial, ahistorical, and regurgitated Zionist narratives that have been used to justify Israel's ongoing ethnic cleansing against the Palestinian people. I was not alone when I called for this council to rescind its resolution and instead assert the Palestinian people's right to liberation, to call for the end of USAID Israel, and to condemn the genocide in Gaza. But instead of taking accountability for their sponsorship of genocide, this council decided to silence my comrades and attempt to call them out. This forum is meant for this council to hear directly from the people of Spokane. Yet, if those people disagree with this council's actions, they move to silence them. I'm talking directly to you, Council President, when I say that it was council member Bingle that proposed this racist resolution in which it was stated that, and I quote, "This resolution is condemning the violent act of war perpetuated against the state of Israel and affirming its right to exist and defend itself." This quote continues on by saying, "And whereas each of us have a personal responsibility to prevent the spread of misinformation and condemn violent acts in any form," end quote. This statement is peak hypocrisy. As this council, as council member Bingle did not once attempt to condemn the state of Israel for its constant massacre of the Palestinian people, Bingle did not even attempt to consult Palestinians in Spokane on their thought of that resolution before presenting it to the rest of this council, or every single one of you, to vote in support of genocide. So instead of this council actually hearing from its constituents, they were too busy silencing my comrades David and Zach, attempting to directly call out their hypocrisy. There are clear examples of this. Once again, I'm addressing you, Council President, when I say that Bingle called a point of order on my card my paper for not only directly addressing him, but also simply stating the fact that the state of Israel is an apartheid state. Bingle stated, and I quote, "My point of order is outside of just naming the council members. We also have the rule of decorum and respect to continue to label the country apartheid is incredibly disrespectful and outside of bounds." He said this while on September 25th, people spoke of their appreciation of council member Bingle, naming him without being interrupted. Why was this allowed? We know why, because this council stands on the side of genocide, apartheid, and misery, and not on the side of liberation, self-determination, and democracy. Free Palestine. The council, I signed up tonight. David Brookbank with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Council President, all my remarks tonight are addressed exclusively to you without exception. Council President, on October 9th, a council member presented a pro-Israel resolution to you and your fellow council members. Another council member then read into the public record a statement from a constituent whose daughter lives in Israel. The statement contained information which was falsely attributed to New York Times and had been falsified by inserting the word Hamas. In other words, Council President, in what was proved to be a successful attempt to silence you and your fellow council members, and to ensure in a unanimous vote upon the resolution, council member Cathcart's reading of the factually false and misattributed constituent statement referencing Hamas poisoned what purports to be a democratic process, effectively silencing four council members and yourself, Council President, a silence maintained to this day. Furthermore, Council President, through a preclusion process which was intentionally left in a long meeting for which inadequate public notification had been given, failed to allow two people waiting in the remote queue to testify. This lightly undemocratic process without public comment and purposely poisoned, purposely poisoned by use of altered information to silence council members urgently requires the rescinding of council member Bingle's resolution. Council President, as we speak, Israel's illegal bombing of civilians continues with the death, the death toll approaching 10,000 Palestinians and upwards of 5,000, of whom are children, with unknown war buried in the rubble of their bomb homes, hospitals, and places of worship. I call for you, yourself, Council President, to introduce tonight and guide to a vote the rescinding of council member Bingle's resolution, and subsequently to seek the grabbing and passage of a new resolution to support the people of Palestine in supporting and in US military diplomatic aid to Israel. In addition, Council President, the big council should begin an immediate investigation and report and take action against council member Cathcart for presenting falsified information to council and public. How two persons in the virtual queue were not allowed to speak should also be investigated, and a report made back to the public at a future council meeting. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to direct myself to you.
So half these people don't even live down here. They're out here clapping. They're little ringleaders up there marching.
Don't you go home, Will.
You don't tell me to go home. Why don't you go home? This is my neighborhood, lady. I live here. Don't tell me to go home.
Go home, Will.
Okay, I'll tell you the same thing. Yeah, ignore me. Yeah, I came here to speak, but I can't now because of you frickin' psycho. Hey, hey, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not, you know what? I'm not gonna be like you. I, I just find this ridiculous. Hey, well, all I got to say is you guys all know me, I don't care. I find this kind of ridiculous, because I came here to speak, but you all are, you guys are stopping me from speaking and a lot of other people, all because you want to talk about what's happening over there in, you know, in another country. How about in our own country? In our own country, our government, you, Joe Biden, people you guys probably voted for Democrats? They support Ukraine, war in Ukraine, they support, now they're going to Israel. I'm not for that, you know that? As a veteran, I don't want us going to war. I've, I've actually been over there. I've seen women covered in head to toe like her, their face, you can't see nothing but their eyes. So, I know, I'm not somebody that just sits here and lives in La La Land. And Saturday, you guys literally endangered people's lives by marching in the street. Oh, and, and what? You think that's funny? I know, but you're, it's not helping your cause. You're, you're making your cause look stupid. If you'd use a little bit more common sense. I speak out just as much as you.
Who has the power? What would you do if there was a war?
I don't agree with no one. I don't agree with no one. That doesn't have nothing to do with city council. We have city council, we were gonna talk about city business, like the homeless problem here, the crime, the drugs, but instead, we're talking about Palestine. But it doesn't affect me. Do you know I walk out, I walk out the door and there's people doing drugs in my doorway? Is that okay? Do you like, do you like people doing drugs? Is that okay? Is it okay watching homeless people sleeping on our sidewalks? That's not okay with me. Obviously, it is with you. And I care more for our own people than some people over in another country. You want to ask me? Don't ask me that question. They just chant whatever they say. How about if I would do it? You wouldn't care one bit, but they wouldn't care. They just say whatever.
Well, it's a little different when you're marching with guns, right? But, but like.
We're, we're, we weren't lobbying for that. Do you not believe in your second amendment? Please, I hope you do. They're socialists, they do. John Brown Gun Club and a lot of them, I met them.
But what I want to, but what I do want to ask you there is, you know, you don't like marching in the street, but I mean, that's how people have made change in this country for years.
I know, but I can't speak now. I wanted to speak. They're not gonna come back and speak now. Now they're gonna make more rules. You guys are crying about them having all these rules. Now they're gonna make more rules.
Cause I think we're just both human beings here, right? And you don't like war, right? I don't like war, right? So you agree, right? You agree on that, like war is terrible, and you don't want people to die away, okay?
As a veteran, I, you know, I floated over there in the Middle East for months on a time, enforcing a bullshit no-fly zone when Saddam Hussein. Do you think I liked spending all my time there? I was supposed, at that time, I was supposed to be on my world tour. I'm on a, this fancy five billion dollar aircraft carrier that I helped build in Virginia, and then we took our maiden deployment and went around the world, but because of Saddam Hussein and our government, we were over there enforcing a no-fly zone for months. In 140 degree weather. I watched, I watched people that were serving the, so you guys and the socialists and everybody can have their free speech and their rights. And that's what I'm about.
Yeah, so we both agree that war is bad, we don't want it, we don't want that, right?
And I don't want our country in Israel.
Right, yeah. So we agree, we agree, which is great, right?
And in Ukraine.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that as well, actually.
But I never hear you say anything about that, why?
Honestly, if they, if they, like, if they start talking about Ukraine again, I will start talking about that as well.
And start bashing Joe Biden.
I cannot stand Joe Biden. I am not a Joe Biden supporter at all.
And I laughed at your last rally, cause you guys started saying stuff about Joe Biden. And so I laughed.
We were trashing him because he's, he's complicit in this.
He's a swamp monster, Democrat that's been in power for 50 years. How does somebody that's in our, in our government, a public servant, have like all the houses he has?
I agree, bold, corporate-backed parties are trash, they're trash.
But you can't say that about Trump, because he's actually earned, no matter what you say.
The guy was gifted, you know, hundreds of billions of dollars by his father, but beyond that, okay? Now, okay, what I'm trying to say is, when we march in the street, that, there's a long history of doing that, you know what I'm saying? It's like, like, literally, we would still have segregation if it wasn't for people marching in the streets, you know? So like, when we did that, it's a, it's an exercise of our first amendment rights to do that, right? We weren't endangering anybody, there was cops lining up.
You know, there's crazy people out there in the world, they could have been like, hey.
If they want to drive into us, yeah, that is a risk, but for us, for us, our, our cause, like, we're risking things by doing this, right?
Don't do stuff like that. Cause they're gonna only make more rules and make us, it's harder for us to speak.
This whole thing was not planned to escalate, just so you know, but when they would not let justice address my name, which is, it's BS, like, you should be able to address council members by name and hold them accountable. Hold your elected officials accountable.
See, there's some stuff, I don't like the city council as it is. Trust me, I got 1,550 emails. You guys are talking about Chief Midol, well, Lori Kinnear and even Betsy Loker, so they're pretty corrupt. A lot of conversations between a big business.
Right, we're not big fans of any of them, to be honest.
Yeah, but one of these guys you're probably gonna vote for, Paul Dillon, he's gonna do this.
I actually can't vote for any of my votes in Spokane though, but whatever, so.
But I mean, the whole point is, is I have respect for the donkey, just because I'm young, like you guys actually show up. Do many of, do many of the GOP, MAGA, or whatever, like any of those, no, it's me, it's Will. For years, I've been showing up, and they all know, everybody knows me, they know that. I'm not, I'm pretty honest, I just get pretty passionate. But I live down here, and, I mean, like I said, I did it to you guys, you guys are organized, you guys are, I mean, dude, I can't even, I can't even get nobody to show up, come to city council, cause they're scared or, oh, I gotta work, I'm like, like, look, a lot of these people probably work too, but they're not. Yeah, they come down here and then say what's on their mind. I agree with quite a lot of it.
But that's the first amendment, so you do.
So a lot of the people like, you know, on my side, they'll get on Facebook, they'll get on, you know, I call Kiro Warrior, they'll get on there and say, oh, city councils, you know, say what they say, and I'll be like reading this, I'll be like, oh, and I've actually commented, why don't you guys actually go to city council? Go to city council, say what you gotta say, no matter what you believe. I mean, like the MAC, they've been doing that for years.
It's great, right, you know, it's, it's civic action, right?
So I'm all for that, but my, when I called it out like this, I wanted to speak.
Yeah, I 100% understand.
And they didn't even get me on the list, that's the other problem. Like, I, I was here before five o'clock, standing in line, and then they read down this list and my name's on it. And then I'm hearing people from Liberty Land, you know, other cities, you, you said you're the valley.
Yeah, but I mean, I live my life in Spokane. I work in Spokane.
But I only get to speak once a month. Yeah, I only get to speak in the beginning of last month, and trust me, they're very strict on it. Also, I told, uh, one of my other friends, we need to have like a, maybe you guys can organize this, I work with you guys, uh, like, uh, we have our own town hall, our city council meeting, like, maybe at the library. We have it on the weekend, and we can get up there and have like three minutes, and it can be a holiday thing, and we could all sit there and, you know. Because I don't get to talk to people like that.
I just want to get, as a human being, you know, we're both human beings here, right? And I think, like, there's some things we need to agree on, and also, I just want you to understand, like, what we're doing, like, you know, like, it wasn't like a, that whole thing wasn't like this, we planned it that way, okay? Um, it was escalated where justice wasn't.
I don't, that was out here.
Anyways, I appreciate your conversation.
I guess it's over? Wait, is it over, guys? I wasted all this time today and it's over. See, why wouldn't I be mad? I literally was at a meeting and I had to spend it short, cause I wanted to get to city councils. This is the guy that was filming me the other day. He was filming me from inside the car. This is the most ridiculous, I just wanted to.
They're helping you on Saturday.
I bet you they want your help if the evil, some bad guys show up.
Help!
Because it's true, you guys don't like law enforcement, but they're the first ones you call, and I know that for a fact. Because I've had you do it on me.
You guys have a good night.
Say what? Have what?
I said you guys have a good night.
Oh, you too, sir. Peace.
In the Middle East.
Yes, peace in the Middle East, please. Cause my concern too, we might be over there. Because my concern too is, we might be over there fighting, and our, my people are gonna get to it all because of the war in the Middle East. Oh, man. How interesting. So, alright. So there you guys go. That's that. That's that. Didn't last long, didn't last long. Did not last long, I wonder why? So, um... Basically, that was about, obviously, people, one, one, one of the city council people, a couple of city council people are pro-Israel, defending Israel, and people are not liking that. Um, there was a couple Palestinian, a few, uh, only a few, maybe two true Palestinian people here. Um, the rest, we already know what it was. So, they interrupted the meeting, um, because they kept on mentioning council members' names they're not supposed to. So they kept on disobeying the law, go figure, right? Because that never happens.